I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Perez?
Here.
Councilmember Van?
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Here.
Councilmember McIrvin?
Here.
Councilmember Prince?
Here.
Councilmember Corman?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, we have a great attendance tonight. This is fantastic. We've got a lot of excited family members and we do have some elected officials in the audience. I'd like to announce, we have former King County Councilmember Larry Gossett. We have former Renton Mayor Kathy Colker. We have former Renton Councilmember Dawn Person. And we have former Councilmember Marcy Palmer. And then last but not least, former Councilmember Tony Nelson. Oh, okay. I was just notified we have also former State Representative Velma Valoria. Hopefully, hopefully I didn't miss everybody. Well, we're going to start off tonight with the ceremony and swearing in of the elected officials. There's five of us tonight and we start off with... With me.
So swearing in Mayor Pavoni is Judge Charles Delarente.
Repeat after me. I, Armando Pavoni...
I, Armando Pavoni...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support...
That I will support...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution and laws...
And the Constitution of laws...
Of the state of Washington...
The state of Washington...
And all local ordinances...
And all local ordinances...
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform...
And I will faithfully and impartially perform...
And discharge the duties...
And discharge the duties...
Of the office...
Of the office...
Of Mayor of the City of Renton...
Of Mayor of the City of Renton...
According to the law and the best of my ability.
According to the law and of the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next, we have Councilmember Valerie O'Halloran. She is being sworn in by her husband, Michael O'Halloran.
I, Valerie O'Halloran...
I, Valerie O'Halloran...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution, Constitution and laws of the state of Washington...
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Washington...
And all local ordinances...
And all local ordinances...
And I will faithfully and impartially perform...
And I will faithfully and impartially perform...
And discharge the duties...
And discharge the duties...
Of the Office of Counsel Position Number Three...
Of the Office of Counsel Position Number Three...
According to the law...
According to the law...
And the best, and to the best of my ability...
And to the best of my ability...
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, next up is Councilmember Ryan McIrvin. He is being sworn in by his wife, Stephanie McIrvin, who is also a Renton School Board Director.
I, Ryan McIrvin, do solemnly s... I, Ryan McIrvin... That's what we were... That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington...
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington...
And all local ordinances...
And all local ordinances...
And I will faithfully and impartially perform...
And I will faithfully and impartially perform...
And discharge the duties...
And discharge the duties...
Of the Office of Counsel Position Number Four...
Of the Office of Counsel Position Number Four...
According to the law and the best of my ability...
According to law and the best of my ability...
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, next is Councilmember Ed Prince. He is being sworn in by Judge Leroy McCollough.
Good evening. I would like to take just a point, or just a minute of privilege, to thank Mr. Prince for being who he is. Father of two wonderful children, 15 years married to Megan, a WSU alum, okay. Former Chair of the City Planning Commission and the Executive Director of the Washington State African-American Affairs Commission. I would like to celebrate you, Ed, along with all of your colleagues, for this momentous achievement. And as a member of this community, I want to thank all of you for the great work that you have done and greater works that are on the horizon. So with that, if you will please raise your right hand. I state your name...
I, Edward Prince.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution and laws...
And the Constitution and laws...
Of the state of Washington...
The state of Washington...
And all local ordinances...
And all local ordinances...
And I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially...
Perform and discharge...
Perform and discharge...
The duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
Of Counsel Position Number Five...
Counsel Position Number Five...
According to the law...
According to the law...
And the best of my ability...
And the best of my ability...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Amen. All right.
Okay, our final swearing in is for Councilmember Van, and she is being sworn in by former State Representative Velma Valoria.
Thank you, Councilmember and Mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I would like also to have a point of privilege. Kim Khan-Van has been elected to the Renton City Council. She is the first Asian Pacific Islander woman in the city council and the first Vietnamese to be elected. And I want you to know that the voters of Renton did us all proud. And with that, please raise your right hand. I state your name...
I, Kim Khan-Van.
Louder. Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington...
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington...
And all local ordinances...
And all local ordinances...
I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge...
I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge...
The duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
Of Counsel Position Number Seven...
Of Counsel Position Number Seven...
According to the law and the best of my ability...
According to the law and the best of my ability...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much for all the people that helped swear us in tonight. It's fantastic. So next, what we're going to do is we're going to take a short 15-minute recess and we're going to go next door so that everybody can shake their hands and take pictures and have cake and refreshments. So we will be back in exactly 15 minutes. To call this meeting to order, and could we please have roll call again?
All right, Councilmember Perez?
Here.
Councilmember Van?
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Here.
Councilmember McIrvin?
Here.
Councilmember Prince?
Here.
Councilmember Corman?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Great, thank you. Next, we have the administrative report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I have one item to report on this evening. A section of the Cedar River Trail between Cedar River Dog Park and the Riverview Park will be closed to all through traffic on Tuesday, January 7th and Wednesday, January 8th in order to remove dirt, rocks, and trees that unfortunately slid down an embankment next to the trail causing conflict on the trail. So if you have any questions, feel free to check out the city's website. Otherwise, it should be reopened by Friday. I'm sorry, by Thursday. Thank you.
Okay, great. Next, we have audience comment. We have one person signed up to comment, and it's Stephen Ratzlauff. And please step up to the podium. You have five minutes. Please state your name and the city that you reside in.
All right, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Stephen Ratzlauff. My last name is spelled R-A-T-Z-L-A-F-F. Live in the city of Seattle. However, I represent the Washington Seaplane Pilots Association, which is a member organization of approximately 500 pilots and aircraft aficionados. And we utilize, our members utilize Renton Airport extensively. And so I have submitted a letter. I think you probably all received that, and to the city clerk. And I'd like to read some key comments of that for the record and provide my information input based on my participation in listening and the Transportation Subcommittee just prior to this. To begin with, the seaplane base at Renton Airport is this historical significant, historically significant facility that served the city of Renton and greater Seattle for nearly a century. It's the only seaplane base within a thousand miles that has both a seaplane base and a hard surface runway, which allows you to switch your floats out for wheels and vice versa. So it's a critically important airport that's historically significant. We're requesting the city of Renton take immediate action to protect and preserve not only the seaplane operations, but operations for all of the users of the airport, both commercial aircraft production and the economic viability of the airport overall. By way of background, over the past decade, Boeing has increased production at the Renton Airport, and this has led the FAA to reclassify the airport. In accordance with the FAA design standards, the increase in operations has resulted in an update to the aircraft classification code from Bravo Two to Delta Three in order to reflect the increased annual, number of annual operations. These annual operations are pickoffs and landings of Boeing aircraft, basically. However, the design standard is based on total operations and doesn't take into account that these planes take off, they don't return. If they need to return for safety reasons, they're going to go to a bigger field like Payne Field or Boeing Field. So it's a very unique aircraft. There's no airport. There's nothing else like it anywhere in the world. The, so for that reason, I'll talk about that in just a moment. The subsequent changes required by this are significant. And they greatly hinder the operation and use of the airport by everyone else because it requires widening the airport, extending the airport, as I think you all know. The, for seaplane use, it decreases the actual capacity of the seaplane base by over 70%. We looked at the design of the new seaplane docks and it's just, it's, it just decimates the seaplane base to the extent that it's going to kill nearly every user of it and, not user, but businesses that utilize it. The, some of the exhibits, exhibits in the memo I sent show the specific layout of it and where, why it decreases the capacity by 70%. So we're asking two things. One is that you petition the FAA to reconsider the reclassification of the Renton Airport from Bravo to Delta. We understand this was pursued in the past without success. However, we believe that you should make an effort to do this in light of the realization that the impacts determined in the landside analysis are so significant and so severe. And in fact, in terms of the viability of pursuing this, there was an FAA official at the July RAC meeting who stated that they weren't going to reconsider that until the city made, and the airport made, a good faith effort to comply with it. At this point, I think you probably know that there's been a lot of good faith effort put into what the, into resolving the impacts, and the impacts are confirmed to be significant. And so therefore, we request, number one, to go about that. And we, the Washington Seaplane Pilots, as well as the, as the AOPA, the Airline Owners and Pilots Association, which is the largest organization representing pilots and general aviation in the United States, are prepared to help you in every way possible to obtain that from the FAA. If that's not possible to obtain that relief on the reclassification, then we ask that the airport seek modifications to the master plan, which has already been discussed, and I don't think there's a need to talk about that right now. The key thing is to see if you can get relief on the reclassification. And we're prepared to help. That's it.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would just like to say that this, this topic did come up and, as was alluded to, in Transportation Committee this evening. And, and the issues are all really on point. I think when we bring forward our report on today's committee meeting, I might want to make a few additional comments to clarify that report in the context of these very good questions. So we'll be bringing that forward in a few minutes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, next we have consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez?
I move that we concur on the consent agenda.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the consent agenda be approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And now we're on to unfinished business. Councilmember Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I, in Community Services, I do, I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Community Services.
Do we, are there reports to be read?
Yeah.
Yes, so I'll read the report and then we'll vote. Community Services Committee Committee Report: Lease Extension Between City of Renton and Northwest Restaurant Experience for River Rock Restaurant Located at the Maplewood Golf Course. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the lease extension to 2027 with Northwest Restaurant Experience, which is doing business as the River Rock Grill and Ale House located at the Maplewood Golf Course. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Yes, and so I thank you for the reading. And I move that the council, the council concur with the recommendation of the committee.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the council concur with the committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And next, we have Councilmember O'Halloran.
No unfinished business.
Thank you. Councilmember McIrvin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Aviation Committee has three committee reports to read.
Hey, Transportation Aviation Committee: Lease Agreement with Crescent Capital Eight LLC. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the short-term lease with Crescent Capital Eight LLC, resulting in annual revenue of $123,972.48. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin?
I move that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the council concur with the committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next report is an appointment to the Renton Airport Advisory Committee. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to confirm the mayor's appointment of Ms. Josephine Medenia Bayon to the Renton Airport Advisory Committee, Benson Hill Neighborhood, Primary Position for a term expiring May 7th, 2022. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin?
I move that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the council concur with the committee report finding. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The final report from the Transportation Committee is regarding an amendment to an agreement with Mead &amp; Hunt Incorporated for the airport master plan. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute Amendment Number Eight to Contract 14126 in the amount of $214,366 with Mead &amp; Hunt Incorporated for additional work on the airport master plan. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember McIrvin?
I believe this is the committee report that Councilmember Corman wanted to mention something on, which, which I totally support, but for the purpose of keeping consent within Robert's rules, I'll go ahead and move it first. I move that the council concur with the committee report.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the council concur with the committee report. All in favor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, if I could go ahead, so it's not to debate, but just to, to inform. So, so Mead &amp; Hunt has been the consultant that's been working on the airport master plan. As a reminder, and perhaps this is new information for some people watching tonight, but the master plan is necessary for the continued safety of the airport and for us to continue to receive grants. We go through this continuing development process, or master planning process to look at future safety improvements that we might want to make, as well as other improvements to the airport. This, this particular one is partway through the process. There's a, an element where we went to the FAA for the designation for the type of airport it is based on the expected service, what type of airliners. And the FAA sort of took us by surprise by saying that it needs a higher, bigger designation, which is a designation basically for 737 operations that's in, in par with like the Burbank Airport in California or something. It's, it's a, it's a commercial 737 designation as if we have scheduled service. That has led to a process where we're looking at, if we have to expand the airport to be as big as like the Burbank Airport in California, where we're talking about impacts through much of the, or many properties in downtown, as well as trying to extend it into the lake. We, we don't really think that's doable. I think even the FAA doesn't think it's doable. But we're, the process for trying to reach compromise agreements is still a ways off. It's still kind of complicated. So meanwhile, there's people in, property owners in downtown that are wondering if they're going to be impacted by the airport expansion. And then there's, there's people at the airport that actually start to get displaced because the stayout zones and safety zones around the runway actually widen for that kind of service. And so many of the operators, as we heard tonight from the seaplane operators, are concerned about the impacts. Having said all of that, Mead &amp; Hunt, which has been the consultant for the five years now, they, they have a little bit more work to do to sort of wrap up the work that surfaced all of these issues so far. They've, they're, certainly the redesignation is highly controversial. I would like to see us ultimately, see if we can go to higher authorities to question that recommendation, but, but that's not for us to do tonight. But what, what we're doing tonight is basically extending the contract with Mead &amp; Hunt to kind of complete their work. But the important part that I guess I wanted to say is, is one council member, and I know that everybody ultimately will need to weigh into this and will need to maybe spend some time, perhaps at a council retreat, talking about, kind of deep diving this. But is, this, this extension of this contract doesn't really change the fact that, that that designation, I think, should be looked at again. And Mead &amp; Hunt sort of knows, as they go into this, that they're going to be collecting the data that we would use to actually make, make a showing to authorities, maybe back in Washington DC, of how much impact there would be with this new designation so that if we're actually asking authorities to revisit the designation, we have meaningful data, we can show them so many, you know, operations are impacted, so many businesses are impacted, so forth. So that's what this does. And the reason I wanted to just take some time on a night where we're already so busy, but I wanted to take some time just so that people at the airport or people in the community that are concerned don't see this as, as us accepting the fate of the redesignation. It's just to finish the data collection. And thank you for the time to explain that.
Of course. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So I do know that this is an important issue and staff has been working on this. It's something that I've asked for, a briefing to be brought up to speed. Being day three, there's not a lot of action taken on it. So I do know this is extremely important to a lot of businesses and a lot of people in our community. So we'll make sure that we take the time necessary to look into this issue, so.
Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember McIrvin?
I just went.
Are you, no, are you done?
Oh, yes, that's it.
Okay. Councilmember Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Finance Committee has three committee reports.
Okay, the first report is approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Counts payable: total payment of $39,618,759.06 for a number of vouchers and payroll benefit withholding vouchers and 14 wire transfers. Two payroll: total payment of $3,118,123.76 for payroll vouchers and direct deposits. This is for the November 16th through November 30th, 2019, and the December 1st through December 15th pay periods. And then number three is a Kidder Matthews total payment of $191,094.56. And the municipal court total payment of $7,640.72. If anybody would like to view the vouchers, they're filed in the clerk's office. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Prince?
I move that the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the council concurs with the committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next report is regarding an agreement for improvements to the Kiwanis Park. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to enter into a professional services agreement with Bruce, Dees, and Associates in the amount of $364,045 to provide professional design and construction administration support services for site improvements to Kiwanis Park. The project will be funded from bond proceeds in the Capital Improvement Program Fund, Fund 316. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair. Oh, and members, sorry.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Prince? Yes, there's a lot of work going to be done on Kiwanis Park. One of the things that they're going to do is something that the residents have been asking for for a long time, which is making sure that it's ADA accessible. So very happy that we're going to get some work done on Kiwanis Park. And with that, I move that the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the council concur with the findings of the Finance Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the final report from the Finance Committee is a, I actually have two...
Two.
I have two more, yeah. So the next report is for Jean Coulon Memorial Beach Park Trestle Bridge Replacement. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to enter into a professional services agreement with WSP USA Incorporated in the amount of $324,400 to provide professional design and construction administration support services for the replacement of the Trestle Bridge at Jean Coulon Memorial Beach Park. The project is funded from the bond proceeds from Fund 316. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Prince?
Yes, so we can be doing a lot of work in Coulon this year, as you'll see when we have our next committee report. With that, I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee report.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the council concur with the community, the committee report. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Now, this is the final report for the Finance Committee. It's regarding the North Water Walk at the Jean Coulon Memorial Beach Park. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence... The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to enter into a professional services agreement with P&amp;D Engineers Incorporated in the amount of $285,783 to provide professional design and construction administration support services for the North Water Works, or Water Walk improvements at Jean Coulon Memorial Beach Park. Project is funded from bond proceeds from Fund 316. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Prince?
Yes, so once they're done with this North Water Walk, the surface is going to look a lot like what we're seeing now at Ivors, so they're going to do the major upgrades there. And one thing, they want to try to make sure they can do it with the least amount of disruption possible, but Coulon's definitely going to be busy with construction. With that, I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the council concur with the findings of the committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next we're on to legislation.
Okay, we have one resolution. It's a Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, Amending Council Policy 800-10. This is the council vacancy policy.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Perez?
I move that the council adopt the resolution as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the council is adopting the resolution as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it passes, and we are on to new business. Councilmember Perez?
Mr. Mayor, we do have a vacancy.
That's correct, and it says I was supposed to announce it right here in writing.
Individuals seeking appointments to the vacant position number two C must meet all state requirements for the position and must submit the required material to the city clerk by January 22, 2020. I will now defer to the city clerk so that he can explain the process in greater detail.
Okay, for the council vacancy, to qualify as a candidate for this council vacancy, applicants must be a registered voter of the city of Renton and must have residency within the corporate limits of Renton at least one year immediately prior to consideration for the vacancy. A person shall be considered fulfilling the vacancy by submitting a letter of interest from the candidate, a resume, and letters of support from community members, this is optional, and a completed council applicant questionnaire form. This form will be available from the city clerk's office or from the city council liaison probably starting tomorrow. The deadline for submitting the material is set for January 22, 2020. And then additionally, at the January 27 council meeting, council will deliberate the merits of the candidates. Please note that council may elect to recess into executive session to conduct the deliberations. However, any selection of a candidate or slate of candidates to interview will be done during the open session of the meeting. If council selects a slate of candidates to interview, the date and time and place for those interviews will be on February 3, 2020, at 3:30 PM in council chambers as part of the committee of the whole meeting. And then later that night, that same night, at the regular council meeting on February 3, council may vote to appoint a candidate from the slate of candidates. Whomever is selected will be sworn in by the city clerk at the next regular council meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Perez?
The council encourage all eligible residents that will take, that would like to be considered to participate in this process. On a personal note, I want to tell you that I did this six years ago, and I have never, I have never regretted. And it's a great way and an honor to serve our community and to give back as well to the city. Friendly reminder to my colleagues that the council would not engage in any outside discussion with members of the council. There should be no discussion of any of the candidates among council members other than in council meetings. I would also like to announce that on January 13, at 6 o'clock, in the conference center, we will have a committee of the whole, and we have four items in the agenda. Number one, council retreat. Second, council priorities. Third, regional representation. And fourth, emerging issues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Van?
Nothing. As of now, that is.
No, no unfinished business. No new business.
New business, yeah.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to announce that the next Utility Committee meeting will be held on January 13, 2020, at 5:30 PM in the council conference room. On the agenda are the 2019 to 2020 Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation and Replacement Project, Monroe Avenue Storm System Project Grant, and finally, emerging issues in utilities. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, thank you. Councilmember McGurven?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee will meet on Monday, January 13, at 4 PM in the council conference room. We have nine items on the agenda. Keene County Parks Property Tax Levy, Capital Project Coordinator Position for Parks, Wash Dot Agreement for Transportation Demand Management Implementation, Sunset Oaks Fee Waiver Request, Coulon Park Play Equipment Appropriation, Renewal of Arborist Contract, May Creek Property Acquisition, Vouchers, and Emerging Issues in Finance. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to announce a Planning and Development Committee meeting for January 13, 2020, at 5 o'clock PM in the council conference room. There are two items on that agenda. The first is a 2020 CED Work Program, and the second item is Emerging Issues in CED, and that's all. Mr. Mayor?
Fantastic, thank you. Well, I want to thank my fellow elected officials for my first council meeting as mayor. And with that, what's the wish of the council?
Move we adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?